Hey, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. All right, so we'll start off, if you would please stand and I'll give you the second question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen, do you have any requests or public comments? Nope, seen none. All right, can I have a motion going to executive session?
Oh, so moved.
All right, motion made by Mrs. Lynch, seconded by...
Mr. Saviano.
What are we looking for?
What are we looking for?
All right, we're actually gonna have two executive sessions. The first one is for personal recommendation.
Right, I don't have any. But somebody else has one, I don't have any, like me, except for myself.
Anyone?
No, well, they got answered.
All right, let's go ahead and scratch here. Thank you. All right, let's go into over business, consent agenda. Can I get a...
So moved. Second.
All right, we are leaning forward.
Second.
All right, motion made by March, seconded by Diana, to accept the consent agenda as is. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I say...
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept and seal the executive session minutes of January 25th.
Second.
Motion made by...
Diane Campbell.
Yep. Ms. McBride, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah.
Now, personally, I have something to...
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Andrew.
You're gonna do February 16th.
No.
You just said January 25th. That's executive session. We're no executive session.
Just an executive session.
Close the executive session.
No, no, the school committee workshop meeting, February 16th. You said January 25th.
That's all part of consent.
Part of consent.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Dr. Andrew, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to introduce Rosemarie Muller as our new Director of Technology. She's on the audience today. Rosemarie comes to us with a impeccable reputation. She, in the past, has been, received the Nauspen Innovation District Award, the Rhode Island State Department of Education Data Quality Award, the National Skills USA Total Quality Management Team Award. She's currently the RISDI president. Prior to that, she was the RISDI treasurer, and she's been an administrator in and around the district for the last 10-plus years. So, we are really happy to welcome Rosemarie to our district. I know she'll take us to New Orleans, and I'm really excited to be working with her. So, welcome, Rosemarie.
Is there anything you don't do, Rosemarie?
Just do windows.
That's what I mean. Well, she does...
Did I get that, sir?
She does do windows, eh, front books.
Nice turn, nice turn.
He's getting good in his old age, you know?
I set him up, though. I did. I knew the answer.
This was a tag team.
Rosemarie, on behalf of all the school committee, thank you, and we wish you very well with our district and forward to working with you in future.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yep. All right, Karen, if you would, take it away for recommendations. Oh, good Lord.
No, that's okay. I'm gonna make a really bad joke. Recommendation, S. 2016-08, that the school committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the request of two families to homeschool their children for the 2015-2016 school year, adhering to all requirements as set forth by the Bristol-Warren Regional School District.
Motion to approve, seconded.
A motion made by Mrs. Saviano, seconded by Mrs. Silver. Discussion. Seen none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Ms. McBride.
Recommendation, S. 2016-09, that the school committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, supported by the Budget Facility Subcommittee, approve the FY19 budget request.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, sorry.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Dell, seconded by Mr. Silver. Discussion. Sixty points.
Okay, I'm not yielding, Mr. Silver.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I just wanted to thank the administration, Pauline specifically, and all of the other administrators in the district who worked really, really hard to make this a manageable budget, and I feel really comfortable going to joint finance with an increase of .64 for next year. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. All right, any other discussion comments from the school committee? Go ahead, Ms. Campbell.
I also want to thank, this book was excellent. I did read it cover to cover. Amazing. And I just want to point out to the audience, I know there are lots of things in here that we see that you may not always see, but we are reducing our debt payments, so that helps to keep the numbers down. We made a number of consolidations, and we've done a great job of keeping our expenses in line, including some realignments and things like that at the different levels. So, I am confident that even though it is a slight increase, it could have been much worse, and/or much higher, I should say, and we still get the job done. There's no programming cut in any of these places, and in fact, we're increasing programming. We're staying cutting edge on, first, in terms of technology, in terms of where we are going, in terms of STEM program, working with the communities, staying in touch, and those kinds of things. So, I'm really proud of this, excuse me, proud of this budget, that we are actually able to do so much and still keep the numbers in line, considering that the natural increase is worth much more than .64. Natural meaning the step in inflation and all those other good things, and we still were able to keep it down so much. So, congratulations to you, Pauline, and you, Dr. Andre, and your team for doing a great job pulling this together. Thank you very much.
All set, all right, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Saviano.
Yes, I would like Dr. Andre to answer this question for me. Have the meetings taken place with the, I noticed that he wrote to the chairs for all the town councils?
I met with one town today. We're trying to reschedule, schedule for the second town.
Now, you...
I met with Bristol. I haven't solidified a date with Warren. That's up yet.
Okay, thank you. May I?
Yep.
On Pauline, these are simple, you know, it's just, on the budget comparison, 2015 training began right at the front, the question, the question I have is, what is mid-level administration? What type of...
That's school-based administrators?
School-based administrators.
Principals.
Principals, assistant principals?
Yeah.
Okay. I noticed that there was $84,000, eighty-four. Can you see it right up top there? How, what happened?
Currently, the district owns, owns a special needs bus, a handicap accessible bus with two personnel on there. By switching that to a purchase service...
Excuse me, if you would, Mrs. Saviano, just precisely state where in the book you're looking at, so everybody else can follow along.
It's, in the book, it's page three.
Page what?
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry.
Andrew, on page, page three, right from the beginning.
Just looking at the budget comparison by object code.
Yes.
Which shows FY15, FY16, budgeted, FY15, audited, actual, and then FY17 request, and there's a reduction of $84,000.
It's the fourth line?
Yep. By giving that route to, for student, there's a savings to the district of about $125,000.
Wow. Okay, and how about rentals? What rentals do we do? It's halfway down the page.
Yep, I know where it is. It's a purchase service. Our rentals include rentals of the gym for gymnastics, rentals of golf courses, ice breaks, swimming, pool time. I can obviously give you more detail on that, but that's basically what's in that.
What were the changes that took place that brought 47,000, 43,000?
Off the top of my head, I can't answer that, but I can get that to you.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for not giving you...
That's all right.
Okay. And what is other, down at the bottom?
Other...
13,608, third line from the bottom.
Yep. Reduction. Okay, that would be, like, memberships, so my professional organization, your professional organization, it would be other fees and dues, just anything that really doesn't fit into any of the other categories, so...
So, have you eliminated some of these, sorry, have you eliminated some of these examples?
We have, yep, yep. Being a little more, you know, looking at, is it necessarily part of two professional organizations when one really does the same thing? Is it, in other words, what are we, what are we getting for our memberships, if anything? So, it's, it's time to really fine tune and look at that.
So, what you, what I'm doing is looking at return on investment?
Absolutely, all the time.
Very good. If you could then go to the reconciliation of revenues, it's three more pages after the one I was on. Reconciliation of revenue, looking down at the bottom, transferred to capital projects,
Okay, that's, that's not the revenue reconciliation, John, that's the statement of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2015.
Yes, at the top, it says FY 2015 reconciliation of revenues.
Oh, okay, you're absolutely right.
That's, I thought there was some, is that correct? Because I don't think that heading is correct.
The heading is not correct. It is a statement of revenues and expenditures.
That's, I see like a conflict to me.
It is, you're absolutely correct.
Okay. And so, getting to that, what's gonna happen with that one?
That will fund our capital projects program. As you well know, we reinvest, fund balance in that capital projects for all of the, the $11 million that was approved to, to...
So, are those restricted funds?
They are now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Saviano. Any other...
I have other, I have other things, so I don't want to avoid the people.
All right, so you hit your main points, yes, you won. Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Schofield.
I have a question. I know that Dr. Andre had indicated in his, in your memo that you all are trying to coordinate a meeting with RIDE regarding the distribution of state funding, and so, I'm not sure how much of this is actually how it will end up, but I was looking at the state aid, on the state aid page, or in that section, I don't know how to tell exactly what page this is directed to, but...
The history of policy.
Yeah, under state aid, it's the second page in there. So, I was trying to, I went, I'm in the state dollar change column, and I, in this, you know, I just, I'm not a budget person, so I, I could be just confused, but under Bristol-Warren Regional, the amount is $2,763.76, and then under that, I see $2,791,578, and I just, it just stood out to me because the Bristol number is higher than the combined number, so I'm trying, I just want to understand that.
You're looking at the budget book that was sent to you?
Yes.
Okay, and that's a draft copy of the projected revenues from RIDE?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's RIDE's document?
Oh, this is?
Yep, it is.
Oh, okay.
And it's a draft.
Okay, so that's not...
That's not my document, that's a RIDE document.
So, we don't know what, do we know what that looks like for us, if we still have to coordinate a meeting to talk about distribution of state aid? I'm trying to follow this, because I know we're not super privy to what's going on, but when I saw it in your memo, I thought I should at least look this over and see if I could make heads or tails of what's happening.
So, I'm a little privy to what's going on, and that's why we're asking the meeting for RIDE to make heads or tails of it, and so, what's it made in by a draft, and with, you know, the current waiting for Judge Maddow's decision, so we're just trying to plan on how we move forward, and that's the purpose of the meeting at RIDE, just to seek some clarification. So, it's still a little early to tell what's gonna happen next month.
So, there's still a talk on what's gonna happen.
Okay, any other discussions? John, second point?
Yes, thank you. All right, I'll be as brief as possible. Under enrollment census, Pauline, enrollment census summary report, there are initials, and I'm sure, I'm sure I should know what those initials are, but in different categories, like at the top, it says GPK, as an example. Do you have the book there?
Yeah.
I don't, but it's pre-K program.
Okay, so, what does the G stand for?
Grade.
Grade.
Grade, PK, and so, and then grade PF? Grade PF?
I don't have it.
GK, G?
What page you on, John?
Enrollment census summary report, it's, it's, it's right at the beginning of enrollment. Oh, okay, okay, I get it. Our attorney filled me in, and he's not gonna charge us for it. Don't worry. I'm just trying to close the deal. Okay, thank you, I'm all set there.
Okay. Any last questions, comments? Seen none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Janice?
Nice job.
Yeah, yeah, well done. I'll just piggyback on some of the comments made here. Dr. Andre, Pauline, your staff, great job, and it's, seems like it gets easier and easier to read these reports every year, so, I mean, yeah, I know, it's a good job, so, thank you. All right, so Karen, if you would, bring us into the next recommendation.
Recommendation, S. 2016-10, that the school committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the resolution in support of the formation of a coalition among Rhode Island's regional school districts.
Second. Thank you. Motion made by Mrs. Saviano, seconded by Mrs. Silver. Discussion.
This resolution's in our packet. I must have missed it. Yeah, all right.
Okay. All, go ahead.
Yeah, I, this is the one that, that we were going to...
Yep, it looks like we're gonna go there next week.
Yeah, at the State House?
Yep.
But we're gonna vote here first.
We have, for the resolution.
Good, okay, thank you.
Yep, just to make it public. All right, any other comments? Seen none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Recommendation, S. 2016-11, that the school committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve Mount Hope High School's core values, beliefs about learning, and academic, social, and civic expectations.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion made by Mrs. Pratt, seconded by Mrs. Campbell. Discussion. Ms. Dell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, in the interest of full disclosure, and introduce what I'm about to ask for, I sent an email to the superintendent over the weekend, informing him ahead of time, that I was gonna be making possibly two requests for a couple of changes to this document tonight. The reason I do that, I do think it's really important to warn the administration ahead of time, I think it makes for a more productive meeting, rather than catching them by surprise. And it worked out quite well, because I did receive an email response, it was forwarded to me from, I apologize, there were only three documents here, Wayne Lima, Maureen Gautier, as you pronounce, and Laura Cabrel, regarding my two requests. We received Mr. Dell's suggestion revision, we agreed to change the word democracy to republic, and that's on the last page, last bullet, under civic competencies, of course, that can't be changed without a full vote of the committee, so I'm asking that the committee would consider changing that last urgent document for democracy to republic, and the three people sent me the email stating that they really don't have a problem with that, so I'm asking that to be changed.
Oh, no, my motion.
Wait, you look at that. Oh, okay. I moved that we change the word democracy on the last bullet, on the last page, and replace it with the word republic.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, motion. Seconded by Mrs. Saviano. Discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Campbell, she chubbed it.
I was gonna say, I don't know if I might say this thing there, I don't want to appear to be stupid here, but could you elaborate on your nuanced differences between the two wording, two words?
Well, they represent two entirely different methods of governing. There's a big, there's a huge difference between democracy and republic. The biggest difference is, a republic has a constitution that actually defends the rights of the minority. It protects you against what could be a runaway democracy in which the majority always rules.
Okay, I get it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to know why he wanted to make the change.
Good, all right. All in favor?
An amendment, right?
Of, the change, the motion, to change it from democracy to republic. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, say it. Your other one, go ahead.
Yeah, again, just in the interest of full disclosure, I, excuse me.
Where are you, where is...
Here. Is that about this one?
Exercise the right to, yeah.
Citizenship in a...
Okay, now, where are you going next?
Well, I'll tell you, a second one going next. This is just purely in the interest of full disclosure, I don't want anybody to, I don't want to hide anything. My second request was to be, in addition to a bullet under proposed beliefs about learning, my proposal that I sent out was states as follows, "Students should be allowed access to a variety, to a variety of learning environments that include academic, vocational, athletic, extracurricular settings, including the creative elements of humanity known as the arts." The response that I received from the three people I stated a few moments ago says this, "However, though we appreciate the suggestion to add an additional bullet to beliefs about learning, the proposed beliefs about learning reflect a collaborative belief of all the stakeholders and was approved by 87% of the faculty participating in this document." I just want you to know that this is what I asked for, and I'm withdrawing the request only because it's, you know, 80% of the people think it's okay, the way it is, so it would probably be for me to make a further suggestion, so I'm withdrawing that suggestion to add that bullet.
Okay, good. All right, any further discussion on the original motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All say it. Okay, so it's going to the subcommittee, school committee reports on any issue about the budget. Mrs. McBride.
Well, as you can see, we've brought the budget to you, and our next meeting is next month, and I'm not sure what the date is, and we'll be going back to the, looking at some of the other things that we need to do for the school district, and talking about joint finance at the time.
Okay, to personnel.
Sorry, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Chair, March, are you gonna be having any strategy meetings, you know, et cetera? I guess you answered the question, joint finance will be on your agenda, so discussing, you know, presentation, what will be included in that presentation, et cetera, will be done at that meeting?
No, that meeting comes after the first joint finance committee meeting. We don't, we haven't, we didn't strategize last year, and I don't think we're going to this year. I believe that Mario, and Diane, and Pauline pretty much put together what they wanna talk about. I would suggest that as individuals on this committee, that you ought to make any ideas that you have, or anything you think should be pointed out, that you email them, so that they can work it into their, into their program. It gets unwieldy when a bunch of people are sitting there trying to decide what some people are going to say, so pretty much left it up to them. All right? Right? Ladies and gentlemen?
I guess what I was thinking is, in the past, we've had, I know you've had, you're attempting to have meetings with both town councils, I remember we went through, you know, training, maybe the numbers, and so on, with individuals, is that still part of the process of what you're, you're reaching out, or you're just reaching out to the chairs and the business managers for the different towns, or are you opening up to anyone else who'd be interested? I'm just thinking that last year, it was pretty much a person who is interested in it, and who came in and did a whole presentation on tax rates and so on and so forth, and that, to me, it came out of the, I don't know if you were expecting it, but those kinds of opportunities for people to, the public, to participate, or is the joint finance that opportunity?
Uh, it would be, so I asked the JFC chair for one of those meetings, and then the reply was, we'll have two in March. And so, and then last, over the last few years, we had those meetings, we had the UCOA meetings, and then the participation from the two towns was pretty low, and it didn't seem like there was gonna be a demand for the UCOA meetings, per se, as we did in the past. So, that's where I tried to meet with both the towns to find out what are the strengths and opportunities, so that we can actually be a little more proactive, go into the JFC, so that we know what their concerns are, and how our budget impacts their budget. So, when we did meet with the town, and Bristol was really enlightening of even going in with our minimum increase, if there was gonna be an impact on Bristol, what would that do? But it was really encouraging to receive the, really, the recognition from the town manager that they go through the same budget process that we do, you know, that they don't want us to go into a structural deficit, and they're trying to avoid that, so we like to do the same thing with Warren at this point, but it's just, you know, nothing against the town of Warren, we just haven't been able to coordinate a schedule at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. As far as the budget meeting, it's gonna be on March 21st at 6:30, out of the school.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep, no problem. On to policy, Mrs. Schofield.
Thank you. The next policy meeting is Monday, March 7th, on State Street in Bristol, 6:00 p.m. We'll be continuing to discuss our agenda setting and executive sessions, policies, and we will be starting work on an interlibrary loan subsidy for the district as well. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. Personnel, Mrs. Silver.
Well, as far as the personnel of Subcommittee is concerned, there really is nothing new to report. However, in line with personnel sitting at this table, someone informed me that today is a special day for you, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Oh, for this gentleman?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got it wrong. Happy birthday today, gentlemen? Wow. So, we're here to celebrate as well in ancient history. When the world was blessed with, with the presence of Mr. Saviano. I'd just like to say happy birthday to Mr. Saviano.
Happy birthday.
Like I have said to other people who wish me a happy birthday, no one has ever met an Italian like me before. And the difference is, there is only one Italian that has a middle name, George. And that's because I was born on George Washington's birthday. And for the first 15 years of my life, in the north end of Warner, I was called George and not John for that reason. So, I have three middle initials, and George is Warner. Thank you.
I just wanted to take the time, Mr. Chair, to say happy birthday.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Auntie Wellness, unfortunately, cannot be with us. She'll be back shortly, though. But I heard, you know, her notes to go ahead and pass it on to everyone. Next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March 1st, at 4:00 in the conference room at the district's headquarters. Two guests will be joining. Karen Wether, the wellness coordinator of Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition, will give us an overview of what they will do and how they will support wellness in our district. And then there's Carlin Wirick, the wellness program specialist at Trust, who will review the Trust wellness program and discuss its recent survey among our district staff members to assess their wellness program, wellness program interest. So, she's got it. And as far as change of initiative, I've got nothing to hold on. So, can I have a motion going to executive session?
Motion, Mr. Chair, second.
Okay, motion made by Mrs. Saviano, second by Mrs. McPry. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're gonna go into executive session. Pursuant open meeting law 42-46-R, subparagraph is subparagraph 2, for the following legal advice in reference to town law litigation. We will talk about that one subject matter. And at the conclusion, we'll come back out here and we will adjourn the meeting. There will be no further discussion of this meeting in the public. Thank you.